It is the 12th day of March, 2012. All right. Are there any modifications to our agenda? I see none. Our next section is the mayor's comments, and I have a few things for this evening. I would like to welcome the honorable Judge Michael Hendrickson here. He's visiting here today, and sir, I feel very strange sitting down and introducing you. Normally, I stand when you're in the room, and it feels a little odd. Judge Hendrickson is here this evening. He's running for the 30th Judicial Circuit. If y'all have a chance after the meeting, you'd be well informed to take a few minutes and talk with him. A few things I have on my notes, and I would like to refer to those briefly. From time to time, we have concerned citizens that will lodge complaints about our city employees, and I take those to heart. I have people that call me at all hours of the night with various complaints stemming from, though most typically, our fire chief driving too fast in town. And of course, my first question is, was he in the fire truck and were the lights on? But we do have a lot of valid citizen concerns, and I do try to answer those, and I take those very seriously. I have talked with our employees about slowing down. I know they're wanting to make our tax dollars stretch as far as possible by being expeditious, but I do advise them to slow down. I do talk to our city employees about other grievances that our citizens do have. But I want our employees here tonight to know, and our citizens to know, that when our city employees are in the right, I've got their back. I'm going to stand up for them. And a few meetings ago, our animal control department, Ms. Payton, was questioned about her failure to respond to a certain situation involving pit bulls. And I want to stand up for her and state publicly that she was in the right. First of all, she was on vacation. The citizen expressed several attempts to contact her, and she was never called, or she never called him back. The fact of the matter is, that gentleman never left a message. He might have called several times, but no message was left for her to return a call. And again, she was on vacation. Despite the fact that she was on vacation, she was available to meet our needs as well, should they arise, should it be necessary that she clocked back on and worked during her vacation. So, that being said, I do want to go on and discuss briefly the situation with pit bulls here in Buffalo. Something that hasn't been talked about in recent weeks, it was something that was talked about months ago, and it would be nice to be able to not take a position on that and sweep that out of the table. However, tonight, I will take a position on that. As mayor, I feel that a pit bull ban would be against public policy for a number of reasons. First of all, there are constitutional issues that have been raised. Secondly, there are other means to achieve that end. There's the old saying that guns don't kill people, people kill people. And perhaps it's the same with pit bulls. It's not the dogs in and of themselves. It's the owners that don't maintain their dogs, don't take care of their dogs, don't set their dogs up to be successful. As far as the constitutional concerns are, that many a times, these laws are void for vagueness. Someone might say, "A pit bull." What is a pit bull? Well, if someone's dog is mean to someone else, it might be labeled a pit bull. It's aggressive. And there might be some temptation to wedge that into a statute. There are also issues of the 14th Amendment equal protection. That applies to dog owners as well. Should a pit bull owner have the same rights as a Chihuahua owner? Now, the lower courts of appeal have upheld municipal bans on specific breeds of dogs. And in 2008, the United States Supreme Court has refused to take up that issue, meaning it let several municipalities maintain their ordinance. However, in the state of Oklahoma, the lower courts have ruled that it is unconstitutional to ban certain specific breeds, and the Oklahoma Supreme Court has failed to take up that matter. So, the law right now, as far as the highest court in the land, has yet to rule specifically about whether or not banning pit bulls is constitutional. However, it is my opinion that we should not take any action to ban pit bulls or any other breeds of dogs within the city limits. That being said, if the Board of Aldermen decides to vote on an ordinance banning pit bulls, so be it. I believe ultimately, in the courts, as far as they may practically handle the matter, that it would be upheld. And that's all I have regarding pit bulls. Yes, sir?
Do we have a vicious dog law here?
That's a good question for our city attorney and our fire chief, or our police chief. My understanding that we do.
Yes, sir.
And it's not a matter of whether or not we have laws that can protect us. We're not...
No, it's because, you know, the dog gets mad and hurts somebody.
We do have laws that will handle and remedy that situation. It's not a matter of the absence of the laws, it's not a matter of whether or not they're being strictly enforced.
I know some places where they have pit bulls or big dogs. They have, you have to have a special license, a special, a lot of other stuff, which, do we have that here?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
The city ordinance requires a vicious dog to be muzzled and under the control of its owner. And, I mean, I'll be happy to provide your copy of the city ordinance, but there's also a provision that requires an owner of a vicious dog to carry insurance for liability purposes. So, those ordinances are currently being enforced, and I have been prosecuting a number of those over the past months. So, those are being enforced currently.
What determines a vicious dog?
Yeah. If it's aggressive, if it attacks someone, if it bites someone, if it is threatening towards someone. I mean, the city ordinance lays it out pretty specifically, so in order to define what that means.
I've been bitten by a Chihuahua, a little dog, like that horse dog, and it wasn't bitten by one, then had by a big dog. I work no teeth without Chihuahua. You like global buffalo. Do they be vicious dogs if they attack nature?
They could be.
Really?
Okay.
And ultimately, it'd be up to the trier fact to determine whether or not the dog was indeed vicious. Whereas trying to determine whether a dog was indeed a pit bull might be something wholly more difficult to ascertain. Then we get into DNA, and there are situations where they want to bring a dog's DNA and heredity into account in a court case, and it's simply not practical at the municipal level to send off for doggy DNA. I know it takes about six months or so to get human DNA. That'd a great cost at the Missouri State Highway Patrol lab, and I think, I think we would probably get lapped at if we sent off for doggy DNA. What do you think?
I tend to agree.
Are there any other questions? All right. That's all I have right now regarding the mayor's comments. We move on to citizen comments. Does anyone have anything from our public? You guys are gonna let us off the hook that easy. All right. Minutes and bills.
Make a motion. We accept minutes and bills with presence.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Department head reports. Administration?
I don't have anything to add. Any questions?
Animal control?
The only thing I have to add to my report is, the lady who performed her weekend and holiday work, Jeanette Paxton, she's having some health concerns regarding her heart, and she's under monitor. She is still working weekends and the like, but she's got testing this month, two Fridays during the month. She's not a very old woman. She's around 40. So, we will be aware by the end of the month what's gonna transpire.
And Ms. Paxton, she's a volunteer there at the pound?
No, she actually works for us on the weekends.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for animal control? Building inspection, sir?
I don't really have much to add. See if we have a report that got here, and if there's any storm chills, something to do with it.
Signs have tomorrow?
Yeah.
Oh, it's tomorrow.
I thought it was tomorrow.
Tomorrow, one thirty.
Yeah.
Is there a special name? Is there a special name?
Steak baster, man.
Oh, steak, okay.
Any questions for our building inspector?
I think David's doing a good job on his job now. I recently remodeled by the rules and everything. It don't cost hardly nothing to go with the code, what I've done down there. It's not, it's not that much for the code. Really, it's not. They drive, give away everything, but he's got a good purpose. I see why he helps out. I think he does an outstanding job.
Okay. Parks department?
I've been working on the O'Bannon Center, trying to get it painted, redone.
Okay. And I went through there and looked at it today, at your urging. Of course, you've been urging me for a week now to get over there. And I can report that the O'Bannon Center looks very nice. It's still being primed and still in the process of being painted. But, Ms. Kurt, I thank you for your hard and diligent work on that. Skip to over our fire department. Chief Higgins, do you have anything?
Nothing off the report, no questions. Just been busy. Been busy, busy, busy.
Any questions for our fire department? Any questions for our park department? Our police department, sir?
We had 127 calls for service for the month of February and 77 citations. And thankfully, we didn't have any vehicle accidents at all. We're unusual. We had 31 arrests, and jury looked arrests for drug care, familiar, nine, and warrants for eight. So, ahead and of course, a third in my vehicle, with gas law.
Thank you, sir. How are the new vehicles running?
They're fine. We're just picking them up from the graphics department. You've got everything set. She's trying to figure out how to put a buffalo on the side of, behind the rear glass. And I think I'm gonna go ahead and pick them up and try to get them equipped and get them insured.
They look good.
Thank you.
Really do.
I'm really proud of them. Thank you everyone here for them. I truly do. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for our police department?
Are you using the old ones as decoys?
Yeah, I guess we could do that.
Are we gonna cut the blue cars for bid?
Yeah, I just gotta get the equipment out of it, and then I'm gonna proceed about that.
All right, our street water department?
I haven't got anything, except if a bid come in on a blacktop, do they, do they turn in bids?
But we have one, I believe, from Jernigan, and there are some issues regarding bids. We're gonna have to work towards contracts that have specific language dealing with that.
That's fine. I just, that's the only thing I had, the extra years or whatever was on there before. We've been, you know, we've got big dictators down in the parks, and got some slabs for it. Everything was very nice down there in Southwood.
What about the crosswalk down there?
Oh, yeah. Well, I talked to the mayor. The pitch is good, so we ain't no problem. I just gotta get the location where they wanted it to. Another thing that brought my attention, and I'll tell you, it's a beautiful one that do, they like to have a nightlight there by the crosswalk.
Which crosswalk?
That burning beach, you know, for the crosswalk there. People like to have a nightlight or a streetlight right there.
Hey, Dave's one there.
Because you've had one for Tally right there and almost had another.
And I think that's something that we can contact Empire with and arrange for...
Well, I know the council had to prove it or something, and that's the reason I brought it up.
Can you give me an exact location?
Yeah, Dave, I'll get the physical address, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Because I don't know, we don't know exactly where you want to, if you're wanting, you know, every metal or wood for you.
Do you want to check on that piece from the street light on the western end of the field?
Yeah, I had a note to do that, but we lost electricity, you know, the day after that, so... I did drive by the funeral home a couple times and wasn't sure where the light, if you guys wanted it. So, if Roger can get me a location, that'll make that easier.
Any questions for our street department? Tax collection report? Any questions regarding tax collection? Wastewater treatment plant, sir?
All right. I have several things that need to be discussed. First of all, I really want to give a big thank you to Doc Hawkins for bringing down his track hoe. We pulled that 75-horse pump out and sent it off and got it repaired under warranty. And he sent his hoe down there twice with his men and pulled that, that pump for us. And without it, we could have never had it done. So, I really want to thank you for all the effort you put in for the city of Buffalo. I also want to thank Rogers' guys, because they did 90% of the work on what needed to be done, between them and Daryl. And we were able to get that pump taken out, fixed, and put it back in, so it all went very well. I want to let the board know that as of tomorrow, we're taking the tower at 103 out. We're gonna drain it, and it's gonna be inspected on Thursday. So, hopefully, we'll have a report on it by the study session or by the next board meeting.
That's word?
Yes. Also, our building came in, the chlorine building, and they've got it sitting there now. And tomorrow, they're going to go ahead and get it set and, you know, rivet it down, and then we're gonna start processing living of the equipment from the wellhouse over to the shed. And so, that's about all I've got for it.
Any questions? And I want to take an opportunity to publicly thank him for his hard work with what he does for a living. We recently got a nice letter from the EPA, and historically, when we get letters from the EPA, they will sit on a desk, and we all kind of stare at them and contemplate opening them. And finally, when we get the nerve up, we'll open the EPA letter up, and then we cringe, and then we start worrying about what the federal government is requiring. That was next. The last letter we got from the EPA was very congratulatory. They're happy with us, and I couldn't be happier. And a lot of that is because of Mr. Page's hard work. All right, thank you. It's also, my understanding that DNR is also very pleased with your work as well.
Yeah, we got a commendation from DNR on the wells when they went out during the tornado. We were able to keep all the pouring up and everything running. We never lost water pressure. And so, I sent a report in to say what happened, and they commended us for the actions that we took and the effort we put in to make sure it stayed up. So, DNR's happy with us, too. And while I'm thinking of it, I've got a lot of responses on the smoke testing, which I was very happy with. We sent out 91 letters, and so far, I've had 40 responses. So, the people are taking it seriously, and we're getting the work done. So, all I got.
Wonderful. Any questions? All right. Water adjustments?
I think the motion we accept adjustments is written.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Old business. Moving on to the Locust Street project, with the gentleman, our Alderman. Did everyone get a copy of the Great River Associates document that contains some pricing on there? Mr. Coltrane is here this evening from Great River, and King is a wonderful resource. And I would ask everyone here, if they have questions, please ask him, because he is very knowledgeable about what we're wanting to do here and about how we're wanting to go about it. On this list, we have a number of items, proposed expenses for this project. Some of them are highlighted in yellow. Those that are highlighted in yellow are endeavors that includes labor. That price includes labor at prevailing wage. That's a contract price. However, we would not be prevailing, paying prevailing wage if we're doing it in-house. So, what I've done is, on those yellow highlighted expenses, I've backed out 45% of the cost of that item. Mr. Coltrane has advised me that for the cost of those, we're looking at spending 45% of that for wages. So, I backed out 45%, and I've added in an amount that would compensate city employees. And that comes in at $9,000, approximately less than what prevailing wage would be on this type of project. But I'm figuring it a little bit differently, and I'm figuring eight employees for a span of six months. And that would include two supervisor slash foreman at a wage of $1,855 an hour, three mid-level experienced employees at $12 an hour, and three entry-level employees at $90 an hour. Ideally, if this project is to move forward, I would like to commit to hiring folks for a period of six months with the understanding that if this project gets done on time, which would be approximately three to four months, they would be able to move on to other projects and continue to work and enhance our city. That being said, these wage estimates may be a little bit high. We may not hire two people at $1,850 an hour. We may not hire three people at $12 an hour. It's gonna be something that I believe Mr. Jasper and I would want to sit down and talk about who's out there and who's available, and what their services are reasonably worth on an hourly basis. I can tell you, we recently filled one position on the road department. Someone had retired, and that position was filled. With that one open position, we received 60 applications, six zero. 60 people up here in the city of Buffalo looking for work that are willing to take a job where you work hard, your back hurts at the end of the day, you sweat for a little over minimum wage. Not the best job in the world, but there's 60 people fighting over it. And that doesn't include all the people who mistakenly went over to the county office thinking there was gonna be an opening there. People in Dallas County are hurting for work, and they're willing to take any jobs out there. And I think we have people that are qualified to do this kind of work in Dallas County, and I think we'll be able to hire folks that are local and put them to work. The additional cost added to this would be heavy equipment. We would need to lease or buy, depending on the cost there. Mr. Coltrane says approximately $30,000 for that. We're gonna need to rent a track hoe and possibly a dump truck. Something I have noticed, the county has some dump trucks for sale. And it might behoove us to consider purchasing one of their dump trucks if one can be obtained at a reasonable cost. The grand total of this project is just over $450,000. It's not a cheap endeavor, and it's not going to be easy. But I believe it's something we can do, and something that needs to be tried out once it's done. One of the things I have mistakenly advertised on this, I was under the impression, and it was my fault, that this project would cover from Truman all the way up to Main Street. This project only covers from Truman north to 32. It does not encompass north of 32 around the school. So, the project is overall, once we add that segment around the school, is going to be a little more expensive.
If the school want to help us with this, any?
I have been put on the agenda. Mr. Rieschel and I, we will be addressing the school board on Monday. About that, I spoke to our superintendent today. It's my understanding that they're preliminarily anticipating spending $30,000 on this based on some figures that were provided earlier that were not wholly accurate. So, that's something that needs to be revisited. But this would be the first project, something I believe the city could commit to get started on, and that's going to give us time to engage the school board about how involved they want to be and what they want to get done with their properties.
This coming out of the transportation fund?
This would be something that could come out of the transportation fund and paid for by that fund. Right now, I believe we have around $780,000 in that fund approximately. Is that correct, David? Does anyone have any questions of me or Mr. Coltrane's here tonight? I believe he could provide a great deal of insight if anyone has any questions.
Which side of the street segment? Which side of the street's the side what's going on?
We're looking at it being on the west side. It'd sit, it'd sit right on top of that.
I thought I might have it. Could I pitch you a thing?
Are we talking about widening the street from Main to 32?
From 32 to Truman out there, it would be...
No, 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 from Main Street, from Main Street to the stoplight. That's just strictly a sidewalk that we're talking about, isn't it?
Well, this wouldn't include that section.
I know, I know that, but if we do it...
In our discussions with the school, we would...
We're not gonna have a lot of driveways to worry about, and if we don't worry about... I don't think that road there is terribly narrow like it is on that.
Right.
And so, what my question is, there, really, all we'd have to do is mainly the sidewalk?
Mostly, there's some open ditch there that we'd need to put some metal pipe in to fill that ditch up. But it's a lot easier, a lot easier project from 32 on to the school than it is 32 south.
Has a survey ever been made, been done, by the people that live out there, what they want done on it?
Survey is in asking there...
The people that live out there?
There hasn't been a public open house or anything done, no.
Is there, is there gonna have to be some asphalt work done, and if so, is any cost figured in for that?
What this covers is actually widening locusts on both sides, two feet plus the curving gut. So, it wouldn't put a new asphalt surface on top unless those funds became available. But it would give you approximately 24 feet of pavement instead of the maybe 20 feet that you have in places now.
I'm wondering, because it looks like some of the asphalt out there might be dry and maybe had to be scraped off. Research is, that's why I was asking. I didn't know.
The first time through, you're gonna widen it, put the curving gutter in the sidewalk, and then if you want to improve anything, you can do that as you would put a two-inch overlay over in the future. For cost purposes, right now, it's just to get it up and running and going.
I see.
Where you gonna run that water can? You gonna run it east?
It's gonna go east down Prince and dump into a ditch over the hill. If you go east on Prince, it drops down the hill pretty quick. So, your underground piping system will daylight as it comes out down the hill.
How far from the center line can we go, the center of the road? How far can you go with a sidewalk from the center of the road? How far over can you go with the sidewalk and be on city property like that?
It's not been surveyed yet, so I can't tell you exact footage. So, depending on where those, where the property lines hit, will depend whether the sidewalk sits right on the back of the curb or whether we can get some separation between the sidewalk and the paint.
Who's responsible to clean these sidewalks off when you're running across people's property?
Wouldn't you say clean? What do you?
I mean, snow and all that stuff. Are the homeowners, you're thinking the homeowners are responsible that's, try to snow and ice off, get the name taken, or is the city responsible?
That's a good question. And technically, it's a municipal sidewalk, and technically, it would be the duty, I would assume, of the city. But that doesn't necessarily mean the city will be doing that. I don't believe we have, we don't have the tools in place to clean the very few sidewalks we have right now. the, 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 uh, tools in place to, to clean the very few sidewalks we have right now.
Well, part of why I was wondering is because you have a pretty good size elderly population that I am sure Larry's parents aren't looking forward to the city thinking that they should get out there and take care of it. Because they probably can't, and a lot of them can't.
I, I, I think the city will use the same tactics I use in shoveling my driveway. Wait for it to warm up.
Me too.
City will do June, July, August.
Just as long as you expect all the people to do June, July, August like we do.
I understand.
No, I, it, there, there wouldn't be any, any provisions causing someone to have to maintain the sidewalk out front. And I think that's been a lot of the, uh, the debate and stalling for the last thirty years regarding sidewalks. I think it's the government's position that, uh, that each and every person ought to be responsible for throwing concrete in the ditch in front of their house and following the sidewalk and maintaining it. Uh, whereas the people say, no, we want sidewalks, build a sidewalk, do us something we can be proud of. And, uh, and now's the time where we, we've taken an opportunity to look at the matter and, and, and plan on how to accomplish those goals.
A lot of people say they were against having a sidewalk, but they didn't want to have to get out and take care of it.
Well, a- and I think once we build a sidewalk, uh, it, it's, it's nothing that requires the weekly maintenance. Uh, it's not like...
And they don't want to have to get out and shovel the snow and take care of it?
No, I understand that. And, and I think the people who do have sidewalks right now, that they don't even, when it snows, they don't consider shoveling sidewalks that they, the, the few that we do have. I haven't seen anyone out on, uh, on, uh, Maple Street.
If they, if they don't shovel the snow, the snow off the sidewalk, you still got three hundred and sixty days that it's going to be useful in five years.
Yes, sir.
Um, the water going south and it, does it have a collection point?
Going, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure where that water was going south.
All, all the water would be taken care of and put into the underground system of piping.
They got an underground system south there.
Is there any other question? Yes, ma'am.
Is it the, the city wanting to do the murals on courthouse or is that the Chamber of Commerce or who's wanting to do that?
The Downtown Business Association has been working on that for a while now. Uh, and I believe that the estimated cost of that is approximately twenty thousand dollars to do. Uh, and, and I, well, I have drawings, but they're, they're, they're combed, they're not here and I apologize. Uh, it looks wonderful. I think it'd be something to really, to do something with our downtown, give us the, an ounce of pride. Uh, and still a little bit of, uh, I, I always make the, the joke as, as an attorney and a, and a former prosecutor that they're going to paint the Constitution on the side of the courthouse. And I always joke that we don't want people knowing the constitutional rights when they go in.
They might have to take care of that one.
Neither, neither here nor there. That, that, that would be a function of the county. The county owns that building. And, uh, if, if there were grants or other charitable contributions that were to get that done, uh, that would be on, uh, county property and, and it would be up to the county to maintain and take care of.
I kind of look at that like painting money. You know, some of the money is painted now. To me, I look at that as defacing it. And to me, I look at sticking a mural on the courthouse. You can go stick them on anything else you want to, but on the courthouse, that to me is defacing it.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that's not a function of anything...
And to do it for twenty thousand dollars, I mean, jeez!
And it's my understanding that the notion behind that is using government money. Uh, it's donations and other, uh, grants through, uh, artistic foundations, et cetera. Uh, that's being contemplated for that. But like I said, that's nothing to do with what we're doing here. That, that's not a city function or anything that the city is actively involved with.
So who's doing it down the town?
Well, the Downtown Business Association.
Well, if either county...
Or the Dallas, Dallas County Betterment Association.
You know, they'd be the Dallas County Board, you know, their, uh, judges or whatever. You know, they'd be, they'd be the one voting on it before it'd be done, right? No?
Well, they, they would be donating the, the wall space.
To the courthouse.
But what if they didn't want it?
Well, if Jeff Stafford pulled twenty thousand dollars out of his pocket and said, let's do this, I think the county would probably procedurally have to vote to be able to do it.
I think he could. I'm waiting for Wayne to give the stamp.
The Wayne Rishel matching.
Are Nathan Williams that put the Buffalo on, uh, the Chamber of Commerce?
Boy, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I don't know who did that.
Ma'am, you've seen the murals up at the school, haven't you? On the Shoemaker building?
Yeah.
Did you like those?
No.
There's the end.
Are, are there any other questions that are, that's sidewalk related? And I think procedurally, what we would need to do would be to, uh, to move to amend, uh, our budget to include transportation funds for the purpose, and dedicated for the purposes of this project. Uh, I, I would anticipate, Ms. Poulsen's probably, uh, doesn't have that drawn up.
No, I mean, if you guys want to proceed with the project, I think you just need a mo- a, I mean, a vote to do that.
Or is it something that we want to consider, uh, until our next meeting and then, uh, take up?
I think we probably need to have the survey and everything done too, haven't we?
Wait until our next meeting and then get that survey done.
Yeah, what, uh, I'm looking, we table for thirty days.
Well, the east part of that has actually been surveyed. When the subdivision was done, so a survey would be a very, very quick... They shouldn't be able to, I don't know if they'll find, find, but that, that whole area up through there is adjacent to the subdivision. So it's been surveyed. Oak Grove second.
I second Grove's majority.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. This matter will be tabled to, uh, most of it's for thirty days, but we're, uh, I guess contemplating our, our next Alderman meeting, is that correct? And that's our next, that would be the first of April.
Right. Yeah.
Which is specifically what date? Table till April ninth, is that correct? And then my, my only concern on this is that if, if the board is to approve this project, I would hope that we would get started on it sooner rather than later. And I hope paralysis by analysis doesn't set in and that we have a, an honest attempt to get started before, uh, and you can get the gears, uh, and, and the shovels ready to rock and roll as soon as school lets out so that we can get this project completed while the children are not in school and, uh, that the roads will be unencumbered on the, on the first day of school. Street paving, uh, we addressed that briefly, uh, Mr. Jasper with, uh, uh, the bids we received, is that correct?
Yep.
Anything else on, uh, street paving?
We have to enter into a contract, according to statute now.
Did you have a chance to review that stuff I sent you, Travis?
I sent it to you.
Oh, okay, sorry, did you get it back this afternoon? Sorry. I got busy and hadn't checked my email. Um, there were some, Larry, I think, came in with a gentleman that was interested in bidding on it and so...
I don't want to get it on.
He didn't, I don't think he ever put it... But, uh, in the process of looking into that, I found that there was a statute that had been changed that required us to have six specific things in a contract with a paving company. And so I drafted up just a quick contract and sent it off to Travis to review and the mayor to look at, um, so that we can proceed, but... So if, if Travis has sent that back to me, we just need to, to take bids based on that contract because it should, it may or may not change somebody's price when you have a contract, so...
Will we be able to get them by, uh, next meeting?
We should be able to get them by the study session meeting, yeah.
All right. Uh, anything else on street paving? All right, new business? Any new business? I see none. That's all we have on our agenda. Uh, any further public comments?
I'll make a motion with my...
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, meeting of the jurors?